We have studies dating back to 2000. If you want to know about the railroad, we have a book on that. And so as I researched this more, it turns out that the best and the highest use of the RACE grant would be to open up the railroad to commercial traffic. And just to give you a brief synopsis, when the railroad was built in 1905 and 1906, it was laid with what we call 60-pound rail, rail comes weight per pound. The Union Pacific now runs on 141-pound rail, so it gives 60 pounds 141 pounds. So we can't handle modern freight traffic on that line. Kennicott improved the track between Keystone, KGHM, and McGill with heavier rail because that's where the trains went. But the entire railroad is still that 1905 construction. As I mentioned, the railroad's been studied to death. It is one of the prime objectives of the 2022 State of Nevada Rail Plan is to rehabilitate the railroad to service the city of Ely and White Mountain County. And opening the railroad to freight traffic not only benefits the city of Ely and White Mountain County, but also Eureka County and Nite County. In Eureka County, the hay growers actually load containers in their fields and their hay is shipped across the country and actually also to Ely. In Railroad Valley, we have the refinery. We've had conversations with the refinery. They said if we got the railroad open, they could triple their business. And so that would be another add-on. And we've had discussions with KGHM, and they're very excited about the possibility of opening the railroad. And one of the principal reasons for this is you've all seen the ore trucks heading down through our town. If we have three of those trucks, we can fill one railcar. It's a three-to-one ratio. And the other thing is too, a railroad can move a ton of freight 500 miles on one gallon of fuel. It is that efficient. And so here we have a bulk commodity, be it oil, be a type of concentrate, or be it hay, and we can move at great distances and save money. And then the other thing is too, one of the things that railroads look for are balance. You want loads out, you want loads in. Currently, the mine earns a million gallons of diesel fuel a month. That fuel comes right down Center Alpen Street, a million gallons in one month. So this can all be moved to rail. And the beautiful thing is the federal government has recognized the need for improving railroads in rural America, and so that's where the RACE grant comes from. The RACE grant, 50% of that money has to be allocated to rural projects like us. And the city of Ely is a co-owner of the railroad. The foundation in this particular case cannot apply for the grant. It has to come from the city of Ely. Now, the foundation as a nonprofit can accept donations and apply for other grants to make this entire package work. And so as going this, putting this all together, why the big push now? Well, a variety of factors have all seemed to come together at the same time. I drove down Alpen today and noticed fuel went up 10 cents a gallon overnight. Fuel's not coming down. We are dependent, if we don't have the railroad open, we're dependent on trucks to bring in the food, to bring in propane, to bring in building materials, the whole bit. That's only going to go up. The SNS lawsuit is over. The foundation has applied, you know, different administrations changed the names of the grant. The RACE grant used to be called the Tiger Grant, and we did apply for the Tiger Grant on our first go-around. On the Tiger Grant, we didn't get it, but we did call and find out how close we could get, and if they awarded 30 grants, we were the 31st grant. We were that close to success. Unfortunately, the SNS lawsuit came in, and so we have not been able to apply since the lawsuit was filed back in 2014. So the other thing is too, it's very, very obvious that the mine needs it, the refinery needs it, the hay growers need it. I've been having conversations with Sheldon Mudd of the Northeast Nevada Rural Development Authority, and it turns out that about 20% of his inquiries, or 30% of his inquiries are for land and rail access. There's none available. And then I called, I spoke with GOED about the same thing and mentioned Sheldon's numbers, and they said nowhere in the state of Nevada is there really rail and land access. So opening up the railroad not only supports the mine and the other businesses, but it gives our community an opportunity to bring in new businesses. If you drive up to Elko and at the Osana exit, there is the Elko Rail Port. Now, I love railroads and railroading and the whole bit. When that project was first suggested, I went, huh? Really? Well, I have to eat those words. This is an excellent case of build it and they will come. The rail port has been wildly successful. In fact, they just got another manufacturer, just purchased 21.7 acres of property there to build a manufacturing plant. And of course, that brings in jobs and everything else. Ely is here because the railroad came in 1906, and if we get this railroad up and running again, Ely goes into another economic renaissance, and it's going to bring economic prosperity to the community, and it's probably the best it's seen in 117 years. And so we are on the cusp of phenomenal change. You know, we're going to apply for the grant. Will we get it the first go-around? I don't know. But we can apply again. There's another grant program called the Chrissy Grant that follows right behind this. And so all of the information and everything done on the RACE grant will be used again for the Chrissy Grant. And the city's underwriting of the RACE grant is a $25,000 investment in the future of If we want our best and brightest to stay in town, we have to provide them with jobs that they think will give them the quality of life that they want. And opening up the railroad will be one of the things to do that. So that is the important reason on why we need the railroad open. As I, I have been successful writing grants, but as I got into this more and more, I realized that it was beyond my expertise. And so I reached out to a company called FMW Solutions, who has background in doing these types of grants. And so the $25,000 is to hire FMW to write this grant. The thing about FMW is the grant writing is part of their other operations, which involves Heritage Railroad, Enlightened Nevada Northern Railway, but also other commercial projects too. And so they have expertise, they have the background to actually do this all together, and so we wind up with a turnkey operation. So, and in doing all of this research, we actually, this project checks all of the boxes. I'm cautiously optimistic that the RACE grant will be approved, and if the RACE grant isn't approved, then we go on to Chrissy. But the end game is opening up the railroad to freight traffic. And to do that, we're going to have to completely totally rebuild the railroad. Mark Breckler's 1905, 1906 construction is going to be replaced with modern rail ties and belts. So does anyone have any questions?
I'm sure my colleagues do, but I have a couple of questions. If we notice this date is fast approaching, when this has to be done, and if my fellow council members were interested in this and wanted to do it, but said we'd have the full 25, would you be able to garner some dollars from the mine or somewhere else?
Oh, yes.
Do you have a, for your grant writer, do you have a list of their successes and to hear any of theirs?
It's actually, I believe that it was in the, I, I thought I gave you the handout? Yes, that one there. Yeah, they just, they did a Chrissy Grant just recently, and the Chrissy Grant was...
Five billion?
I'm not sure. I can't, of course, I can't find it right now.
But if I, that's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, but yes, they have had success. And going to your question too, is that when I called them up, we've actually started the process because of the time limit. So I called them up in late January and said, you know, we have to switch gears here. This is not, well, actually, one of the first things I asked them is, in my reading of the notice of funding opportunities, I don't think doing the tourist aspect is going to work. What are your thoughts? And they said, no. And I said, okay, then I want to change gears and go with opening up the railroad. And the grant's due February 28th. Can we do it? And they go, oh, yeah. So this is the type of people I like working with.
May I also ask another question? Jeanette, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm sure, you know, the question is, is there money somewhere for us to, is there any kind of money? Where might we begin to think about this? Could we have some sort of information?
Right now, on the budget, your best bet is the community support.
That's the only place I know of where we would have that kind of money.
Is that the, is that the fund that has the 133,000 uncommitted?
No.
That's community support?
I'm talking about the community support, yes, that, yes, sorry.
So aside from what was budgeted there, or what was planned by the council, there is just shy about 34,000 uncommitted, I mean, that that could possibly come out? Is that what you're suggesting? Sure.
Mark, I like that, you know, my 50 years here in this community, I know the train will do it. We've delivered propane and diesel to mine in Kenton days, concentrate for Montana, we brought in by rail, we shipped out blistered copper, you know, all the way to Baltimore out of this community. We have a CDG grant we were awarded, it went through for an inner model unloading crew from Monroe Valley at the railroad. It was all set up, we got a grant for that. That worked, that proved to be good. The Silver Lions, they want to run on propane, you could easily put a scything, I guess you'd call it, over there, a spur. We even have a spur into Bath Lumber Yard.
Correct.
It's in place already, so this will work. And, you know, our industrial park, which is so underused, it's just a short little train, you know, down to that, it'd be nice, I mean, it just, you go to Ferling, you got freeway, millions of trucks going through, train tracks, they're building two new warehouse on the west and east side of Ferling, it's just huge. We've got hundreds of thousands of salvis going through here. I can see a vision of a distribution center out here, owned here by train, trucking it to Vegas and so forth. I think it's a great deal, and what that will do is it'll bring people here.
Oh, yes.
And then we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna have them. But just get the thing done, worry about the outage.
Well, the other thing is too, and everything has a cost, and again, as you mentioned, Bath Lumber has a spur, they have the building materials brought in by rail.
Well, part of our housing problems too is the material prices to get stuff here. It's just on stuff.
Exactly. And so you can do many different ways. Again, the steel wheel on the steel rail is the least expensive way of bringing bulk materials anywhere. And so you could bring your building materials in. In conversations with the mines, they were talking about, you know, their heavy loads, they want me those in by rail. Earlier in my career, I used to work for Pulte Homes down in Denver, and Pulte built the home in Idaho and then brought the pieces down to Denver and assembled the home on site. And when I say it built, the interior finishing on the walls was already done. They were painted, wallpaper, stained, the whole bit, and they just put it all together. And those homes came to Denver via truck. So there are options that we can do here too.
So I have one more question, like a little naive in putting the cart before the horse, but I'm assuming that if we were to approve something like this, is, is somebody around advertising, say, look at what we have, or are people just gonna know, oh my gosh, they got this now, and we can?
Well, if I understand you correctly, Kenton, yeah, question correctly, once you get the railroad open, are you saying, will they come? Is that your question?
How do you get them to come? That's probably what I should say.
Oh, well, Sheldon Mudd, the Northeast Nevada Rural Development Authority, he's all set to do it for us, and I go with...
It should be noted that GOED has had this project on their radar for a number of years now, and I think this is about one of the only easily openable railroads in the state, and it's looking to prove for the state to support.
Yeah, and I've had conversations with GOED too about if we need additional funding, where it can come from. And so everywhere that I've gone, basically, it seems like this is one of those incredibly rare moments in time where everything is coming together. This would be like I would call a cascading event. One thing after another is falling into place, and the only thing that we have to do is go for it.
The 25,000 number, is that just a fee that it charges?
Correct.
Okay. So they're not gonna go, we're not, we're not gonna have...
We definitely will have a contract with them for $25,000. And normally too, they, and again, this is typical me and them, normally they get 50% on the beginning of the contract and then 50 on the completion of the contract, but because of the tight timeline that we're under, like I said, we've been working on this for about two weeks already, so.
Are there any other questions? We do have both of these items open, item A is just discussion only, but item nine is for possible action. What's the pleasure of council on this? You may.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 25,000 in order to pay the... Okay, I want to get the name right that we're talking about. To provide $25,000 for the grant writers to write the RACE grant from the community support expenses.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Elliott, do I have a second? I'll second that, a second from Councilmember. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order.
Thank you all very, very much.
Item ten, Councilwoman Elliott, start with discussion for possible action, approval of support letter from the city of Ely to Pete Brudich. Secretary of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation, supported the RACE grant to open the Nevada Railway for freight traffic from Ely to the Transcoton Roadyard interchange at Stafford distance of 121 miles.
So I'm gonna ask one to come up here. It's a continuation, but I wasn't sure if I should put all three together.
We are, again, to make the grant, to strengthen the grant, we are asking for letters of support. We are requesting letters of support from our entire congressional delegation, not only our two United States senators and congressmen Amade, but also the other four congresspeople in the state of Nevada. So when this goes before Department of Transportation, they'll see that the entire Nevada congressional delegation supports it. We're working on letters of support from Governor, Lieutenant Governor, GOED. We're working on letters of support from Elko County, Nite County, Eureka County, Lander County, along with the mines, and the list of letters of support, it's about 30 of them all total, so city of Ely will be added to that.
And so you feel you can get all of that, because you've got two weeks?
Yep, we've got three weeks, no pressure.
Mark, the fourth group, I don't hear your hook up with them too.
Correct.
Are they assisting in some of this one?
Oh, yes, absolutely. In fact, we had a meeting with Cameron at 2:00 today, and he's the one helping me with the letters of support from the congressional delegation. Again, we're doing this really fast. We don't know the total cost of the project yet. It's probably gonna be over $45 million, and so now we're gonna have to find additional funding, and so he's helping me with that too. So it's, I believe this is our best chance to get the railroad open. And the beautiful thing is just going to be, once we have all the funding in place, it's like 90, 12 months to recap it. I mean, we're not talking a long project at all. Yeah, it's, there's no rocket science involved. We, the railroad is all driven, owned by the city and the foundation, so environmental studies are minimal, which we've already done anyhow. So, yeah, we're, and they're announcing the Frank Award in June. So it, this, this could be fast-tracked, as it were, excuse the pun.
You know, the irony is, and it's so funny, we're such a high-tech society, and rails are just what they are, and it's so simple. That's what makes our country still go, so.
Oh, yeah, one question, piggybacking on what Cheryl asked about the grant writer. So we paid the 25,000, they're going on this year, and then we don't get, we go over the Chrissy Grant. Would they be able, we gotta pay another 25,000, or can they just mark out this one? Substitute it?
You know, time is money. We go to the RACE grant, and, or I'm sorry, to the Chrissy Grant, and basically 90% of it's written. And so, you know, there would be a cost to do it, I have not talked to them about that. But the other thing, well, see, the other thing is, and again, you know, one of my principal jobs is raising funding for the railroad, so it'd be very easy for me to go to another partner and say, you know, like, the last time we did this, the city of Ely stepped up to the plate, and so this, they paid 25,000, this time for sake of argument, it's 12,000. Can you cover the grant this time? And so, yes.
So in light that we're a little off agenda, I, I'll entertain a motion on the item that we have, which is about a...
Letter of support.
Letter of support, thank you. And if we need to reopen that for further discussion, I'm happy to. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Councilwoman Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Take a second.
Councilwoman Elliott, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Councilmember Elliott, would you have to reopen one for consideration of that discussion about the RACE grant?
No, no, I'm trying to just do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all very, very much.
There's one more thing. Without further ado, item eight, public comment. Please state your name and purpose, and we'll only comment.
Hello, Melody Van Hap. I'm here to kind of voice a complaint. During the 21-22 Murray Street project, the JCR was the contractor, my home's located at the very end of that project. And months before they came to my, you know, they were finishing up, all my sidewalks, driveway access, curbs, gutter, was torn out, and then they were replaced months later in December of '21. At the beginning, the houses that were located at the beginning of the project, all those houses that had driveway accesses were, JCR put back the original driveway access. When it came up to my house and a couple of the others around the neighborhood, I did not get access to my driveway. I had the original access. I got a very steep curb, and the curb goes, of course, the length of my property. And I am unable to get my bike, my scooter, my little pickup over the curb and into my driveway. And I struggled to get my car up there, and so I'm resorted to placing lumber in the gutter. And I've had to do that for a few months. And right now, you can drive by my house and see that I've got lumber laying in the gutter because I cannot get into my driveway. And it has done a job on the alignment to my truck. Now, I called DJ several months ago about this problem, I have talked to the mayor on several occasions, but the curb is sinking, and it has been slowly sinking for several months. Now, this, this concrete work is only a year old. Right now, the last two months, the curb in front of my house has sunk over two inches. And I guess if I wait long enough, it'll drop, and I will get my access. But I, and there's also numerous cracks in this brand-new sidewalk and the curb. So I just wanted to make you aware of the problem I have, and they did not put back the driveway access that I had originally. I have a curb, and I am not able to use it. So I wanted to bring this, and I'm, my next trip up here will be when it really drops, and there may be a problem with the road down the road. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I think I do. Sure. My name is, if you approve the money the tribe is asking for, what fund would that money come from?
Once again, this is a public comment, we're not, it's not this guy.
I can't answer questions?
You can ask, but there's not any respondents. If you'd like to interview one of the councilmembers, it'll have to be outside of the public comment.
Gotcha. Have it randomized to the nearest.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the building for my property, 490 High Street, you've yet to be correct. I pay every month, and I've never used any water or sewer service. The city gave a $4,000 or more write-off to orders of 790 annual line in that part of New College till these years, and I have not paid, only have one consideration and protection under the law. Mr. Mayor, I'm again requesting reimbursement for the sewer problem I had, Terimity at my home at 681 Parker, blocking some of the city's line in the city street, not on my side. With penalties and interest, the city owes me as of January 21st, 2023, $12,741.61. I remind you, just recently, the city paid to reroute a private party sewer line during Phase 3 of the Murray Street project, yet I might give them the consideration. Mr. Mayor, the city has yet to reimburse, excuse me, address the proper installation meter bed and sewer connections to my properties at 729 and 733 Gray Mason Boulevard, nor have there been any compensation for the damage done to the water shut-off valve at 745 Gray Mason Boulevard. Federal law prohibits discrimination in a federally funded facility. Mr. Mayor, your response to my letter dated January 26th, 2023, regarding Congressman Alworth's comments that a person, he knows a person that has 30 or more properties but will not sell them, is pathetic at best. Alworth's statement was made in the public meeting, and he's obligated to respond, or is he disloyal? We need to know. Other than that, don't stir the truth in the public meeting. Mr. Mayor, when I put that in writing, your response was not document responsive. You gotta be better than that, the mayor. Mr. Mayor, once again, I request a complete list of properties and individuals that the city has permitted and have to park our P's on the city.